It's just a thing. What do you mean a thing? All these wonderful staff and, and I'll be saying that again, you'll hear me say that all night, and the wonderful council, and I would like for the present council, even before I start the meeting, I'd like for Liz to take a picture of the four of us together. And I'd like to do that right here in the front. Thank you. Okay. I have not seen the rabbi. Huh? Wait just a minute, we're gonna bring you up, but... He's changed on me, I couldn't tell who he was. So good to see you tonight. Let me kind of read through this, how we're gonna go tonight, so everybody will know how we're going, and again, staff members, there's no way in the world that I can ever thank you, you ladies and gentlemen enough. So the first thing we'll do is a call to order, and the next thing we'll do is have a roll call, and then, at that time, our city clerk has an announcement, and then we will have the invocation by a good friend of mine, and we haven't seen each other in a minute, but he is a friend of mine, and I know that, I hope he's not ashamed for me, so, and if you are, too bad, I just said it. And he will give the prayer, and then our outgoing vice mayor is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
No problem, but you have some Boy Scouts here.
I said vice mayor.
Okay.
And then after that, and the Boy Scout can stand with you if you'd like.
I would like that.
All right. Then we'll have some presentation from elected officials, that's the city clerk, and what have you there, and then we'll make some presentations from me to the council, and then each one of the out, the council members that's going, well, each one of the council members who want to have anything to say, they can do that, and then I have a speech. How many of y'all know how long I've been on the council and mayor and vice mayor and all that together? What I need... I lead at least one minute per year, huh? Can I have that? So I need about eighteen minutes to do my speech. And then after that, we will have business as usual, the public business from the floor, and by the way, if there's anybody, some people asked me tonight, Gary, could they make presentations to us, and I said, "Yeah." So if any of you all who want to make statements to any of us, you can do that, and as long as it's what I want to hear. No, you can do that if you'd like, and then we will have a presentation to the city officials, canvas of the election, and that'll be done by, Gary, she'll bring it to us, and we'll go through the recommendation, vote on those, agency, and then at that point, we'll have a recess for about ten minutes and make some changes, and when we come back, you'll see some new names up, and we're, I'm excited, I'm excited, and I'm very happy, well, I'm gonna say it, you know, I'm not smart enough not to say what I want to say, I'm very pleased to have my replacement as being Rex Parrish, I really am. And you can clap or not clap, I'll clap. Okay. Thank you very much, and I think we're where we need to be at this point, and I see two of my young ones are here, my two daughters, and my grandson-in-law should be here somewhere. Well, he's back, there he is, he's a school teacher, the Illinois College, so he's getting in a position where he can leave, when I start speaking, he'll leave, so. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Jeffra Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Vosilio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vasaki.
Here.
Mayor Hearns.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And you have an announcement, do you?
Yes, sir. I just have two quick announcements. The first one is, and the mayor actually just went over this, that after the Pledge of Allegiance, there will be a few presentations from different organizations to the mayor and outgoing council members. Also, I'm sure many of you are aware that we've been experiencing technical difficulties in the council chambers for many months now, and city staff has been taking advantage, they took advantage of the break between March 25th and now to come up with a new sound system and a new timing system. They researched this for several months, and we're hoping that this is all going to go very smoothly tonight. There is a new mechanism in place, it's on the podium, and it's also on the wall behind me, you'll see a three-minute timer, and it's very readable, obviously, to everyone in the audience, and when you have thirty seconds left, there is a chime, and when your time is out, over, there is a chime and a beep, and it continues. So... And then it starts counting up, so people will know how much over your time you're going as well. So we appreciate your patience on this and your courtesy of keeping within the three minutes, and staff's worked very hard to get this in place, and we'll see how it goes tonight, so, there you go.
I saw Mayor Ledford earlier, I think it was earlier, yeah, earlier today, oh, yes. Can we give him a seat right down front here? Come on down. And I don't know if any of the, Norm, please. Norm, please. Norm, please. And I believe, let's see, any other elected officials here? Okay. Steve, are you here? Come on. Come on, Steve. Thank you, sir. Steve Knight, Palmdale. Now that we have everybody seated, we thank you so very much, and those of you who are standing, please forgive us, but we do really appreciate you and honor you tonight for being here, business people, Boy Scouts, and all of you, thank you so very much, every last one of you in this room, and we couldn't make it if it were not for you. So at this time, what I'm gonna do is ask our friend, the local rabbi, Rabbi David Hinckin Hoffman, I'm sorry, will come and give the invocation, and following that, Mr. Vasaki will have the Boy Scouts to come with him, and their leaders in the pledge.
May I stand next to you?
You may do that.
Because I think this is an occasion that calls for a very special kind of...
Should I stand or stand up?
Stand up.
Stand up.
Stand up, and in saying this for Ed, Andy, and Ron, and all the new leaders as well, I hope you gain some inspiration from the eighteen-year career of our mayor. I want to start off with a little token, this is a keychain of the South African flag, and I was just in South Africa, and as you are leaving here, I'm going to need new keys to open new doors.
Wow.
I would like to give this to you as a token of how we first met.
Thank you so much.
I had the privilege of knowing President Mandela, you had the privilege of knowing and working with Dr. Martin Luther King, and it made an instant rapport between us.
Good wow.
And it's very interesting that in our sacred literature, we have the story of a rabbi who was a religious leader like you, who said the following, "Leadership demands devotion. Good leadership is never automatic. The heritage of the Jewish tradition records that in ancient times, as Rabbi Asi lay dying, his nephew saw that he was weeping, and asked, 'Why do you weep? Could there be any part of our tradition which you have not studied or taught? Your disciples are sitting here before you, and could there be any act of loving kindness which you have not done? I hardly think so. And over and above all your qualities, you have never intruded into community affairs, you have never tried to become appointed to an office administering to the needs of the community.'" Rabbi Asi replied, "That is why I weep. Perhaps I shall be condemned, because I was able to be a leader and was not a leader." You, Mayor Henry Hearns, were a leader. You chose to add to your clergy obligations the well-being and welfare of all who live in Lancaster, and therefore, you have no need to cry as Rabbi Asi cried. And so now, as you leave to go back to your flock, and of course, you'll still be very involved in communal affairs, I want to remind you of what Douglas MacArthur wrote, because you're at that stage. "Nobody grows old except by deserting his ideals. Years may wrinkle the skin, but to give up wrinkles the soul. Whatever your years, there is in every being's heart the love of wonder, the undaunted challenge of the unobtainable, the unfailing childlike appetite for what next, and the joy of playing the game of life. You are as young as your faith, you are as old as your doubt, you are as young as your hope, as old as your despair. In the central place in your heart, there is a recording chamber, and as long as it receives the message of beauty, hope, cheer, and courage, so long are you young." Thank you. And from the Holy Bible that we share, the prophet Jeremiah...
Yes.
...explains why you were a leader of integrity, and what others now have to do as they follow in your footsteps. Thus says the Lord, "Let not the wise man glory in his wisdom; let not the mighty man glory in his might; let not the rich man glory in his riches, but let him who glories glory in this, that he understands and reveres me, the Lord, who practices kindness, justice, and righteousness on earth. For in these things I delight, says the Lord, and in those things you delight, and you will always be a delight for the people that you love, your family, Lancaster, the broader Los Angeles community, which will continue to honor you for many years to come."
Thank you very much. God, I forgot where I was supposed to be here. Oh, Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
I am so blessed to have people like you.
Everybody could stand, please. Like, I, I'll just stay, I was gonna have to come up here, but that's all right, we'll do this. We have the privilege of, I've had the privilege, and all of us have the privilege of serving in the greatest country on earth, and thank you for asking me in the last meeting to salute its flag, and if you guys could lead us, I'd appreciate it.
Those in uniform, salute, those in great capital clothes, with great Henry Hearn. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance, ready to begin.
Hi. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The next item that we have on our list here is a presentation from elected official, and I'd like to ask city clerk, do we have...
The, I know we have elected officials here to make presentations, however, I don't have a list of who they are, so... We will start with the City of Palmdale, and work our way on through.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we wanted to take this opportunity tonight to congratulate these councilmen that have done a fine job, we want to recognize their contribution, their time spent, and over the years, they've been faced with many challenges, and as a community, we've benefited from the collective, well, genius, if you want to call it that, of working out options for our community, and I got to tell you, serving is no easy task.
No, sir.
It looks simple, but you have to look at it from that side of the dais, it's a little different. So I wanted to take an opportunity to say congratulations, and I know that Steve Knight's got some presentations as well, would you like to go first, Steve?
Sure. Well, Palmdale loves Lancaster, so we brought you two things, we wanted to give you the certificate and a plaque from the City of Palmdale.
Wow.
You know, like the mayor said, it's very difficult to be up there, it's so much easier being back here, and I was fine up against the wall until the mayor brought me up, but, you know, you're gonna make tough decisions, people are gonna be upset, people are gonna be happy, that's part of being a leader.
Yes, it is.
You know, John Wayne said, "Courage is feeling like you want to run like hell in the face of danger, but saddling up anyway," and that's what a leader does. So what Henry and Jim Jeffra and Andy Vasaki have done is led, and I appreciate them, Palmdale appreciates what they've done, and I want to offer part of our gift to you as a commendation, and I'm gonna read it, because there's a lot of wheress and herefores, and good gosh, we want to hear all those.
Absolutely.
So I'm gonna use the mayor's, but Andy, yours is the same, and councilmember Jeffra's, yours is the same. Commendation from the City of Palmdale, Mayor Henry Hearns. Whereas Mayor Henry Hearns was elected City of Lancaster mayor in 2006, and has served on the City Council of Lancaster since 1990, as a council member, vice mayor, and mayor, and whereas during a long and distinguished career in public service, Mayor Hearns has accumulated an impressive list of honors, as well as many awards and citations for public service, civic, and professional achievements, and whereas Mayor Hearns has given generously of his time and effort as a member of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, and has supported programs to benefit all, people of all ages and walks of life, and whereas Mayor Hearns has been a powerful influence for good in our community, and justly deserves this public recognition for his many years of service to our commission, our community. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Knight, and Jim Ledford, as the mayor pro tem and the mayor of City, of the City of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby consider it an honor and a pleasure to commend Mayor Hearns and councilmember Vasaki and councilmember Jeffra for their dedication and service to the City of Lancaster, and our best wishes for many more happy and productive years in the future. And that's signed today, April 2008.
Thank you so much.
How do you want to do this? Bring him up?
I think we can bring him up.
Why don't we bring the mayor, Henry Hearns, forward? Let's get him. And ladies and gentlemen, like I talked about earlier, this isn't as easy as it looks, and I got to tell you, for Henry, for eighteen years serving the City of Lancaster, many tough decisions have come his way, and I know that his heart has called him every time he's had a tough decision, so I know that he lives with himself, and that's the key to this whole experience, is living with yourself, and how well do you sleep at night? I know you sleep pretty good.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of our city, again, we have a little recognition, a little plaque here, and it calls out Henry Hearns, mayor of City of Lancaster. City of Palmdale is pleased to recognize your years of service and your commitment to the citizens of the City of Lancaster, and I'll be just close by saying, both cities are committed to doing what's right for their respective communities, the collective makes a great antelope valley, so thank you, everybody, for supporting your council.
Thank you very much, thank you all very much, I'm gonna give this to my daughters and hang on for me. Thank you, guys, there's no way to, I mean, thank you.
No, you're not done. You're not done, there's more to come. Now, if we can get Andy Vasaki from right down. Again, we wanted to take an opportunity, the City of Palmdale, to recognize Andy Vasaki, I can relate to Andy, we're both aerospace, it's where we came from, and you're still there.
I'm still there, thank God.
And, well, it's serving our valley well, but the fact of the matter is, your job is not an easy job either, certainly as council, you're just as pressured as the mayor, as your staff, as your organization do the right thing, and you have, and we just wanted to take an opportunity again to present this to you, on behalf of our city council of Palmdale, recognizing your achievements and your dedication to your City of Lancaster. Again, we all win, ladies and gentlemen, our community is a great antelope valley. Thank you, Andy.
Proudly this way.
Thank you, good job. And we also have some recognition for Jim Jeffra, but will we see him in another meeting? Maybe we can come back, or should I just present this to the city clerk? Well, I did want to minimize Jim Jeffra, I mean, again, somebody that's commitment to their community, it's obvious, they spent years doing the right thing, I just think as a society, this is what our democracy's all about, is people giving their time and energy to do the right thing, and that's what America's, that's why we're so great as a country, as a nation, is that democracy. It may not please everybody, but you know what? I think in our hearts, we're doing the right thing, and I think that's all you can ask out of somebody, because you know what? Any one of you can come up and take your turn, you just got to earn it, just like these folks have, so, for Jim Jeffra.
That's a little way they're gonna turn you guys into honorary citizens of Palmdale. I tell you what, I believe, unless I'm mistaken, that this is the very first time, and I can't say enough, we thank the Lord for that, the day I was elected mayor, I went down to the City of Palmdale, and Jim was in a meeting, in fact, the newspapers and all were there, he invited me right in, and we got together, had a combined city council meeting, and then I noticed in the newspaper the other day that my mayor, my new mayor, our new mayor, met him in, I believe, in the cemetery. And they made a vow to each other, and I'm looking for good things, that's all there is to it. Mr. Hicklin, Norm Hicklin, I'm sorry.
Ah, they are honorary members of the County of Los Angeles, I will say. More than honorary, they're tax-paying members, so. On behalf of Supervisor Antonovich, it's an honor to be here to honor the three gentlemen who stand before you, who have served this community very well. Mayor Ledford has said most of the good words that I wrote, so I'm sort of, and we don't, we don't do the wheress's quite so well, but I have had the chance in the last five and a half years to work with each and every one of these gentlemen. The success is Jim Jeffra, who finally shaved his head properly. Got to know Henry on a personal note, and really became close friends, we went through a lot, Andy, I knew him when he was just a little guy over at North of Grumman, and that was supposed to be a joke, so, okay. Roll aerospace humor, I apologize, but they are all three very, very great gentlemen, they're great friends, and it's an honor on behalf of Supervisor Antonovich to honor them. Now, Henry?
Yes, sir.
We don't have anything for you tonight, because we're gonna present that out a little bit later in time, but maybe you can take Jim Jeffra's, and then maybe we got some for you, so.
You want to go ahead and take?
Why don't you come down, and you take Jim's? Well, Andy, on behalf of Supervisor Antonovich, congratulations. What they say is, "Recognition to the dedicated service to the affairs of the community, and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all citizens of Los Angeles County," and no true words were spoken, so, congratulations. If he, Andy, next, he'll have a haircut just like mine.
For that man, no better.
Okay, Assemblywoman Runner, office?
I'm beginning this.
Okay, Senator?
We're together.
Oh, you're together, okay.
We got two for tonight. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, Donna Tremere from Senator Runner's office, and I from Sharon Runner's office are very pleased to be here tonight on their behalf, to present you with these joint Assembly legislative resolutions, with lots of wheress's, which we won't read, because everybody here knows what these wheress's stand for, the hard work, the dedication, your honorable, long-time service to this city, and we can't really add much to what's already been said, at least Donna probably can, I can't, but this is something that we're very happy to do, because I don't think people really recognize what service really means when you're sitting up there. We sort of think from the top down in this country, like Washington is the big kahuna, and then you work your way down to the city council level, like it's some lowly office, and it's not, it's the government closest to where we live, it's the government that interacts with our lives every day, and you folks have had the courage and the commitment to sit up there and take charge of that, and for that, you can all be proud, and we can all be proud, and we wish you every success in the future. Donna, would you like to add to that?
Yes, I would. Henry?
Excuse me? Did you say down there?
Yeah.
My birthday actually is tomorrow.
Right. I think it's close.
he extends his thanks to you and your service to Andy and to Henry for your personal conviction and your service to the community. I personally want to say to you, Henry, I started working, representing George in 1996 in the Assembly, when he was in the Assembly, started in, and was a new position for me, going out in the community and representing and attending events after events, and Henry's presence was always a calm support for me. I always appreciated him being there. He was always very encouraging when I had to speak for the first time, and I was really nervous, and just really appreciated attending and doing the circuit with both of you and representing the community. I'll miss you very much.
Thank you so very much.
Your friendship, your support, your willingness to work with us all these years, and I'll just settle for the hearty handshake. You have one of these also for Councilman Jefra, and we'll be attending to you at your, if you're in a formal affair, a little later.
Yeah, yeah. We appreciate that. Thank you, Matt. While I'm here, and what they're talking about, I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity, that on May 10, at 5:00 P.M. at the Olympic Center, is going to be a retirement ceremony for my political career. And the first mayor of Palmdale, I'm not even going to call his name, I don't like him that well. He's going to be there with my larynx full as he's sitting here, but, so, if any of you who decide to come, you'd be glad to. And if you need tickets, if you decide you want to come, over here at the, what's the name, place?
Selena's Kitchen.
Selena's Kitchen, or at our church. And I appreciate having the opportunity to make that announcement. Notice I didn't look back to see if it's okay. What can I do now? This was my. You ever have any?
Yeah, okay.
We're going to do Andy.
Give him.
Want to come on down?
I'm sorry.
All right, do Andy here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
And thank you for your service. Appreciate it. You serve the community well, and we appreciate your service.
You're a young guy yet, and we're sure we're going to see a lot more of you in this community. You can't resist public service, and the community needs you, so, you're going to be back there, you know, you always have, and you'll have a lot more time for the kids you work with, and the track, and the field, and all that, but congratulations on your great term service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other elected officials? Okay.
I believe we have Commander Dealey and, oh, okay, let's have the school district. Okay.
I actually, Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers, I actually have two hats that I want to share this evening. First of all, the first hat is, as a trustee for the Antelope Valley Union High School District, on behalf of my board members, fellow board members, I'd like to thank the three of you for your dedication to education. I first met Mr. Jefra when he was involved in the DARE program with the Lancaster School District, and I first met Mr. Vasaki when he was a board member for the Lancaster School District. Your commitment and dedication to the children of this community goes above and beyond, and I thank all three of you.
Thank you so much.
The second hat that I wear is a personal one, and Mayor Hearns, this one, this is to you. I'd like to extend my thanks. Thank you for serving the citizens of the City of Lancaster with the integrity and honesty that we have come to know and expect of you. Thank you for keeping the well-being of everyone at the forefront of your decisions. Thank you for representing the City of Lancaster and its residents at the many meetings and councils and commissions all across the state of California. Thank you. Thank you for preparing the future for our children and grandchildren. Thank you for doing what you knew to be the right thing, even when others didn't understand. Thank you for being the community's Minister of Peace. And for me, I thank you for your friendship and your mentoring. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commander Dealey and Captain Anderson?
I just feel so honored that we couldn't space it. This is wonderful.
Well, Commander Dealey and I are here to present a couple of sheriff's department scrolls to our very deserving council members. Commander Dealey, would you like to say something first, before we present the scrolls?
Sure.
I hate to turn my attention on you, but I want to address the gentleman up there. I'm sorry that Jim's not here.
I am too.
First of all, on behalf of all the men and women at Lancaster Station, I want to thank you, each of you, for your incredible support. It's easy to stand by us in the good times. You helped to hold us up during the bad times, and I'll be grateful forever, the rest of my life, for the support that you've given us. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with two gentlemen, which each of you are. Thank you very much. I wish you all the best in all the future activities that you're in.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I feel the same way. We get tremendous support from the entire council, and that support that we got from Vice Mayor Vasaki and Mayor Hearns, I will never forget.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
This is presented by Sheriff Lee Baca to Councilman Andrew Vasaki. In recognition of your steadfast leadership and ten years of dedicated service to the residents of the City of Lancaster, your proactive partnership with our department is truly commendable. The men and women of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department join me in congratulating you on your outstanding achievements and wish you well in all of your future endeavors.
And this is a certificate for the Honorable Henry W. Hearns, Mayor, City of Lancaster. In recognition of your steadfast leadership and eighteen years of dedicated service to the residents of the City of Lancaster, as both a council member and mayor, your proactive partnership with our department is truly commendable. The men and women of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department join me in congratulating you on your outstanding achievements and wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you so much.
at this time? Okay?
I understand that Mayor Frank Roberts is in the house. Please, come on down. We have a, we have a seat for you right here, sir. Come on down, Mayor. Either of our former mayors standing, we want to try and see if, right there in the front, sir. By the way, I had quite a few years serving as his vice mayor, and the city council allowed me to do it. He asked me to do it. Council allowed it to happen, and so whatever it was that I've been able to make a contribution in, I really give a whole bunch of credit to Mayor Frank Roberts. Okay, they've left a little period open here, am I correct? Is this the right place? You got it? Go ahead.
We do have one speaker from the audience that would like to speak.
Okay.
And that is Karen Wilson.
If you don't mind, I would like a few other members to come step down with me. My name is Karen Wilson. I'm the third vice president of Antelope Valley Republican Assembly, and I am here to give this certificate of recognition to Mr. Andy Vasaki, who has had many long years of service with this community, first in the school district and then in the city council. He is also the past president of Antelope Valley Republican Assembly.
Okay, wait, just read it, Karen.
This is present, certificate of recognition presented to Councilman Andy Vasaki in appreciation for your dedication and outstanding service to the City of Lancaster, 1998 to 2008, from the Antelope Valley Republican Assembly.
Hold it up.
I would like to tell you that it has been an honor to know this man and an honor to campaign for him, and the next time you're ready, I'll be there.
All right.
Mr. Vasaki, would you like a picture?
Since my mom came over, she come back up. Mary, can you come?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I wonder if I could get out of line here for a minute?
You can't, you're a mayor, aren't you?
Bully pulpit essence privilege.
That's right.
I'd like to ask you to stand. Would you stand, please?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you join me in singing "Happy Birthday" to Henry Hearns, while he's mayor? We got one shot to do this. So would you please join me?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Henry. Happy birthday to you.
Wow, and Jim had a tune. I appreciate that. Thank you so very much. Were there, now, if I'm, I don't know if I'm right here in the next piece of this, were there any other persons in here who wanted to speak? If you did, you can do that. If not, we'll move on with the, with the agenda. Okay, sir?
And here?
You can come down, give your name, and, and, oh, I know who you are.
I'm just a regular citizen of the state of California, City of Lancaster.
Your name?
Odine Lawrence.
Minister Odine Lawrence, by the way.
And I just wanted to say thank you for your service. I've been knowing you since eighty-seven. You've always been a stand-up gentleman. You've been my mentor, and I appreciate your service. I appreciate your tutelage of teaching me and allowing me to be a good husband and a good father. And wherever you go and whatever you do, may the Lord be with you.
Amen. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council. My name is Darren Parker, and tonight I'm wearing the hat as president of the Antelope Valley Human Relations Task Force, a group that you, this council, as well as the City of Palmdale helped form some twelve years ago. I want to say tonight that I am proud to live in the City of Lancaster, because with leadership like yours, there's been a footprint laid on this valley, and as Sheriff Baca said last night, this is truly God's country. But it takes the dedication of men like you to sit on that side of the pulpit and look out here and do the hard work that some of us are not willing to do. Not all the time do you get to hear the glory and the applause. Most of the time, it's the negative comments, the snares, and the boos, but you take that and you look through the pain and look at what that person is trying to tell you, so you can make the right decisions for this community. So I applaud your efforts. As the president of the task force, I'd like to say that you've done a job well done. This community is better. Ten years ago, we were making national headlines as the hate crime capital of this country. Today, we make headlines as the premier community showing people how to fight hate, how to solve inner group conflict and neighborhood issues. It is only because of your courage and your dedication and your commitment to your fellow man that I can truly say you are your brother's keepers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Them is my daughters.
Gee, I hate to turn my worst side to you, but, anyway, I would like to say, on behalf of our family, thank you to all of the staff and to, to a fantastic leader and dad. And you are our hero.
I appreciate that, babe.
My first date to the prom was my dad. And you are definitely not over yet. God has many things for you to do, not in Lancaster only, but he wants to share you with the nations, so I believe that's where you're headed.
Thank you.
May God bless you in your endeavors. Andy, we graduated together right on, I won't tell you how many years ago, but God bless you all, and thank you.
Hey, my, my baby. Unlike a lot of other people, I didn't have an opportunity to go to high school in my part of the country where I grew up as a black person, we could go no further than the eighth grade. So I never heard of a prom, a high school this, and football and all that. And when my baby got up, when she was ready to go to the prom, she invited me as her date, so I went to a prom. We appreciate that as anybody else, and otherwise, and that will move on. Thank you all so very much, every one of you, for sharing with us what I need to do now, and you all keep me aligned here, Mark. I think my next thing is to make presentations to, to the council. Okay, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to say, I got some words written here for each one of my council members, and I need to have you all to know, as I begin to present these things to you, and I have a plaque for Vice Mayor Vasaki. Six years ago, my second son passed away, and we had a council meeting somewhere real close to that, and these guys got up in the middle of the dais, right here at the council, and every one of them gave me a group hug. I will never forget that as long as there's breath in my body. I cannot forget that, guys. I really do appreciate that. All that were on the council, these guys did that, Jim Gillie and all these, I don't forget who was our captain at the.
Pickett.
Yeah, it was Tom Pickett. And all these people who needed to come with me, came with me and, and just gave me a whole brand-new life and a new way of looking at life after my son had just passed, and I appreciate that. Now... Now, the city has grown and, and I think all of us have. In the process of serving, we have grown as well. We learned how to do and accept criticism. And I'm one who don't like fighting because when I fight, I really intend to hurt. And so I try my best not to get in that mode. And, and so I'll, I'll go all the way without saying a word and allow people to say, oh, he don't know what's going on. Well, I know more about what's going on than those who are talking. Doesn't bother me a bit to sit here and watch you. So we've grown in the middle of all of this. And I want to say to you all as council members, I thank you. And I've written a few little words here that I wanted to share with each one of you. And then if any of you have any remarks, you can do that. First one is to my vice mayor. And one of the first things I noticed about Andy Visaki is he's sensitive about the concerns of the citizen. He wants to know what they're thinking. And I really think that that is a great thing, to be sensitive and concerned about the community. He's, he's a tax fighter. And whenever we have a tax item on the agenda, I go to see if I can get up close to Andy anyway. And sometime, there've been a few times that Henry don't even ask me. I was like, "Ask me about what?" I'm not voting for that. He definitely is a supporter of those of you who are paying taxes, a tax fighter. He's committed to the city and a personal friend of mine. And I appreciate that. So I'll come back in a few minutes and give him what is there. Jim Jeffra. Jim, he says whatever he has to say and he doesn't worry about how it come out. He'll go right on down the road saying whatever he said. And when he was sitting right next to me, I said, "Jim, would you keep your mouth just a little bit?" He looked, Henry, by turn. And he'll go right ahead and say what he has to say. And we appreciate that. Good friend of mine. And I was fortunate and blessed to do the wedding for his daughter. And I was, I feel very proud about that and thankful for it. And then there's a guy by the name of Ed Cilio. Ed Cilio. I think he would analyze the analyzation of the analyzing. He don't let anything pass without thoroughly, thoroughly analyzing. So when you talk to Ed, better know what you're talking about because he's really as analyzing, analyzing. Usually gets his point over. I, I like the way he presents things, very systematic in the way he presents things. And you can, and I really thank, thank you for being able to depend on you, even when we disagreed, even when we fought, you took it well. And I appreciate that. And then there's a gentleman by the name of Ron Smith. Now, here's a guy that, I don't think most people really know who Ron is. Ron will ruffle your feathers without a doubt. He'll do that. He can come over very abrasive. But what you don't know, some of you, is that this brother really has the cities at his closest point to make sure that the money and things like that is spent right. And I will stand up for Ron even no matter what. And if I had been a part of the recall, in fact, I would have rather had that be me than Ron. Because I can stand there and let you do what you gotta do and just grin at you, no problem. And if you win, you win. If you don't, you don't. That's how that is with me. But I just really want you to know, Ron, we appreciate what you have done, the way you've looked at things. And being an ex-cop, he knew what to look for in terms of how to get more cops on the street with the least amount of dollars. And the force that we have right now, whether you all know it or not, Ron, was at the root of that, making sure that we got the right number of cops for the right number of dollars. Now, I just want, want you to know I appreciate how you've carried on the business here at the city. So you and your wife are like my own, can I say my own children? Yeah. Y'all don't know what children mean, but children, children, okay. But I call Ron often just to try to keep him seeing where he doesn't hurt. Sometime you have to be at a point where, where you just say, "Lord, I'm in your hand and go." And that's what I did. That's what I've done for eighteen years. I just said, "Lord, I'm in your hand and go." And if somebody want to say something good for me, great. They don't, great. Everything is fine. It seems like it's raining when something else is happening. Right, okay. So I want to say at this time now to my new city manager, I refer to him as city manager, and you all handle it however you want to. I refer to him as city manager, and I'm hoping that, that they will absolutely soon talk to him about being officially the city manager. But, Mark, you've done a tremendous job picking up the pieces, pulling things together. And we just thank God for you and how you've been able to pull that. Every one of you staff members, good gracious alike. Brian, you probably had one of the roughest jobs here, and that is to try to get people to understand what it is all of us are saying. Andy's saying one thing, I'm saying something else, Ed's saying something else, Ron. And you had to pull all that together and make sense out of it. And you've done a wonderful job as far as I'm concerned. I really appreciate that. Parks and Recreation, that brother knows, he knows some parks. He knows, he knows some parks. And so we appreciate that. I got a few more words I say later on at that. And as far as running out of water here in the Antelope Valley, ladies and gentlemen, don't even blink your eye. That ain't hardly happening if we get the money to give to Randy Williams so that he can get water reused going like he really is on his way. We've already spent, I think, four million dollars to get things, get pipe in the ground. That brother's done turned purple because he's turning purple pipe. So he's already turned purple. And all of you, redevelopment, Vaughn, all of you, Barbara, all of you, all of the staff, staff everywhere, I want you to know, I totally, totally appreciate you and thank you for doing what you've done. Now, with that said, each one of you who want to have remarks, you can do that, and I'm gonna let you have yours last. Do you want to say anything, Ed? That's all I have to say about the council members because they've done very, very definitely a wonderful job. I'm gonna put him last.
Before I went first?
I said I was putting you last, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Afraid you're gonna do a special.
See what I had to put up with? It's an interesting experience when you first sit up on this diocese and you don't know what you're doing. And you look toward those who are, have been here for a while to, to teach you and educate you. They coach you about how to think about issues, how things came to be the way they are. And you take that and you form your own opinions. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. I think we've all tried to disagree just on issues and not disagree personally.
That's right.
I know Henry has worked hard at that. And I have to get along with him, he's my neighbor. And we will always get along. Ron and I still disagree on things that I am confident we will find things to agree on in the future as this city moves forward. Jim Jeffra's not here. There's no point in ever trying to argue with Jim because he's already made up his mind. He's gonna tell you what he thinks, and that's just the way it is. But I think as a community, we have to look at the number of hours, weeks, months, years that the three gentlemen sitting in the, in the center of the diocese here have put in to make this city a better place. Do we always agree with them? No. Have they worked their butt off? Absolutely. But ladies and gentlemen, this is a democracy we live in. They were elected, they made the best choices they knew how, and this city has moved forward. That's an integral part of the process. Later tonight, we'll see as this process continues with new faces and fresh ideas. But they're building on the ideas that came from here. And that is something for each one of them to be proud of and something we should all honor them for.
Thank you so much, Ed. Ron?
Well, it's, it's sad that Jim can't be here tonight and get all the praise also.
It is.
And it's been, it's been nice working with Jim. And I think Jim and I agreed on, on most things most all the time. And he served his country well. He served the community well as a deputy sheriff. He served a lot of years on the school board and the city council. And he's had a lot of dedication to this community, and he'll be missed. Andy Visaki, and he's been a good friend. We've been involved in politics behind the scenes for years before I was on the council. He has that conservative heart that I appreciate. And he's done a great job. And he's been also dedicated to this community and put a lot of hours in. And people don't realize how much time that actually takes. I think his wife does and his kids do, as all our spouses do. And, but, I think if you put all four of us together and the amount of time that we spend and the effort we spend, the amount of reading and going places and the meetings and the traveling, Henry does ten times more than that. I don't think there's anybody that has asked, "Can we have somebody there to give us a certificate? Can I meet with the mayor? Can we, can we have somebody here that Henry doesn't go to?" And, and like you said, Henry, you said you don't care what other people think. And, and what they don't realize, and when somebody gets to know you and work with you, that you are a very intelligent man. You are a very caring person with a big heart and care more about this community than anybody I've known.
Appreciate that.
And sometimes they, they might see that, that this love about you is weakness, but I haven't found anybody stronger.
I appreciate that.
And you're gonna be, and I don't think we're gonna miss you because we're gonna put you to work and, you know, we're gonna keep you around for a little bit. And because nobody, I think, except for Frank here in the front row, could, between you two, I don't know how you guys did it. It's a lot of work.
Thank you very much.
And I really appreciate working with you. It's been an honor.
You know, I, I, I do say this, let me clear one point that I made, and let me make sure I, I make that clear to you. I really don't care what people say about me, but I really care about how I treat you. So if I hurt somebody, that hurts me. I do not want to hurt anybody. But if you want to hurt me, hey, you ain't say a word because I ain't going that way. But I really do care if I hurt somebody. And I do not ever want to do that. Not ever. I'm gonna present a plaque here to Mr. Visaki, and he'll have his word. It says, "Andy Visaki, in recognition and appreciation of your dedication, services, and loyalty to the citizens, staff, and city council of the City of Lancaster. City Council from April 1998 to April of 2008, ten whole years. Presented by the Lancaster City Council and the city manager, April of 22nd, 2008, Bishop Henry Hearn's mayor, Ed Cilio, council member, Jim Jeffra, council member, Ronald Smith, council member, and of course, Mark Bozigan as our city manager." And I'd like a picture made of me handing this plaque off. Andy, your turn. Thank you.
I'm gonna do something unusual, I'm gonna do something unusual here and wear my glasses. You know, I've been doing this a long time now. And at first, I, and for some reason they're foggy, but I'll try to make do. First, I didn't, I needed notes all the time when I did my public speaking. And as the, as the years went by, I didn't need them anymore. But tonight, I wrote down, I spent a little bit of time thinking about what I wanted to say. And I'm gonna be pretty brief in what I'm gonna say, but same time, I think it's important that I say a few words that mean a lot to me in, in going out. I think after sixteen and a half years...
Public service.
You earned it. Okay. So I am gonna go by my, what I wrote down because it's important to me not to forget anything. And I want to thanks, first, I want to thank the community so much.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Because a lot of times, people sit in this, this seat and they, they look at it as an elected position and that they can, they have the free will to do whatever they want to do. But, you know, sitting up here is an honor. It's a privilege that the people of the City of Lancaster bestowed upon you. And I'm so grateful for it because between the school board and the city council, I've won five elections. And I cannot tell you how much that means to me and how grateful I am as an individual. So I may even get a little emotional because...
It's okay.
This is a, this is a night where I'm actually very, very happy. Because you don't get this oppor, you don't, not too many people get that privilege for sixteen and a half years. I mean, that's, that's an incredible privilege.
It is.
And I'm very, very thankful for it. So I do want to thank the citizens of Lancaster for giving me this privilege. It has been an honor. And God willing, maybe I'll get the opportunity to serve again in the future. We'll see what God's will is. There are several reasons as to why I can leave this office with my head held high, and I'm gonna name just a few of them. First of all, I believe during my tenure, many great things have happened in our city. I believe we have been on the right track and we're gonna see the results of it in the area of law enforcement. I believe that our industrial development has been phenomenal. We've created a lot of jobs in industry. It's just not as high-profile. And, and that's, that's, that's a pro-family thing. And we're fiscally sound as a city, and a lot of cities can't say that. And that's through our wonderful budgeting practices of our great staff and the support of the city council. And I mean each one of you. I've made many new friends, and I've had the privilege of serving with some very fine colleagues. I was, I can't tell you what an honor it was to see Mayor Frank Roberts here tonight. What a great man of integrity and a man I just love dearly and just truly, truly enjoyed serving with. Thank you, Frank. Mayor Henry Hearn's, a great friend, a great friend and a man with awesome integrity and most important to me, a spiritual leader. We've had a lot of fun together. I sometimes have had to keep him in line, right? But really, he keeps me in line. And I, I think he said it right. We're truly friends.
You bet.
And I'm just grateful for that and just grateful for the, the tower that you have been and, and the kind words that have been said by so many people about you tonight. They're just all so true. I've had the honor of serving with council members, Michelle Idelman, who is no longer in the area, but she was a wonderful council person. Council member Ed Cilio. And Ed, I will miss our cordial and respectful conversations. Even during this last year, when we've disagreed on, on several issues during the last year and a half, we still shook hands afterwards and we still called each other friend. And that's something I'll forever be grateful for. Thank you. And council member Jim Jeffra, who I had the opportunity to serve with for fourteen years. I was first elected to the school board in 1991. Him and I were the two who were elected together. And then he ran for the city council in 1996, won the seat. I, I joined him again two years later. It's ironic that we, we came in together and we leave together. But Jim's been a great friend. And Ron Smith, a colleague whose conservative ideas I have shared. You know, before Ron got here, I never won any of those tax votes. I lost every single one of them. I mean, nobody can deny that. So, and, and Ron's right. Outside of this, this council chamber, we've had the opportunity to serve in other capacities within circles that we share. And thank you for your friendship. I appreciate that and your, and your conservative values, which I've also shared. God has blessed Lancaster with the greatest staff anywhere.
Yes.
I'll miss working with you. I just wish I could be there to make Mark Bozigan our next city manager. Look wherever you wish, and I say this to the next council, but you won't find a better person for the job. He's the best.
Yes. Yes.
Another reason I can leave with my head held high is I believe the strategic planning we did a few years back was just a major turning point for our city. While I won't be here to see the fruits of its labor, I believe we will see significant reductions in crime, greater neighborhood revitalizations, and a model city for fiscal responsibility. I think those are wonderful accomplishments. Another reason, despite a constant bombardment of criticism, I leave with my honor and integrity intact. I might not be able to win an election, but at least I can sleep at night knowing that I always did what I believed was right. Could've made a lot of decisions differently and probably won this election, but I did what I thought was right. As always, and as promised, I ran a very positive campaign and I'm leaving office in my terms and not because I was forced out. Despite a loss, I have no regrets for seeking reelection. In fact, it is just the opposite. Had I not run, then I would be constantly wondering what might have been, and that would've bugged me a lot more. And I think the, important to me is I will have more time for my beautiful and wonderful wife, Donna, who's been here tonight, sitting second row from the back. She's the pretty one back there. Well, I'm sure there's some other pretty ladies back there too, but... My three sons, Adam, Andrew, and Nathan, two of them are here tonight. Um, Aunt Adam is at, taking classes at Cal State Northridge and had to be there. My wonderful mother, June, sitting right here, who's always been there to support me all these sixteen and a half years and working on my campaign. And thank my dad who couldn't make it tonight, but he's been calling me constantly the last couple of weeks, asking me when I'm gonna be ready to go fishing. It is easy to forget, but we, when we as community leaders are being hammered, it is just as hard on our family members. Keep that in mind. To all of my family members here tonight, let me say thank you for standing with me, for supporting me, for encouraging me, and most impo-, most importantly, for loving me during the good times and the tough times. It means the world to me. My advice to the new councils to find a way to work together for our citizens. There is no room for hate in this council chamber. For the sake of our citizens, do your job, do it well, and work for the citizens. Lancaster's citizens deserve nothing less. Agree most often and disagree sometimes, but when you disagree, shake your colleagues' hand and tell them how grateful you are to be serving with them. Encourage each other, don't destroy each other. Treat your colleagues the same way you would want them to treat you. The second word of advice is to always do what you believe to be right. There may be a cost for doing that. It cost me my seat, but at least if you know that you did what you believed to be right, you can sleep at night. You will not have compromised your dignity and more importantly, you will have honored God. While I may be leaving the city council, I am not abandoning my city. Sometimes you will see me addressing you at the podium as a private citizen, maybe even tonight. Other times, you will probably see me at a civic event or working with one of our nonprofit organizations. I promise you, wherever you see me, I will treat you with respect and with honor because you have been given the great privilege of serving the cities of, the citizens of Lancaster. Let me end in a way that would be appropriate for me as an individual. In the biblical book of First Samuel, twelve twenty-three, it says, "Far be it for me that I should sin against the Lord in ceasing to pray for you." The U Samuel is referring to in this verse as the nation of Israel. He was concerned about his country and its people and he never stopped praying for them. Let me ask, is that the heart we have for our city? Or are we more interested in questioning every move that our leaders make? I'm not professing that we should blindly follow our leaders, but I am asking my fellow Lancaster citizens to stop complaining about every decision those we've elected make and start praying for them. You just might find that it makes a difference. That is my final commitment to you, Rex, to you, Ron, to you, Ed, to you, Sherry, and to Ken. I will never cease praying for you and I will ask God, for God's guidance upon your lives and your leadership. I may show up once in a while to voice my opinion, but that will never be done in a hostile way. Go lead and make this city great. Once again, thank you for letting me serve you for all these years. It has been an awesome experience. God bless every one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you who have spoken. And Andy, thank you particularly for being able to share your heart tonight. Um, I told you that I've been on the council for eighteen years and I'd like to take just a moment to, uh, cover just some, a few of the things that I...
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Hearn's. There's one more presentation that we have for you.
I'm sorry?
There's one more presentation that we have for you.
All right.
You can step down, please.
Oh! See, I don't got a line already.
I was excited. Took a while with plaques and I thought Lancaster, you mightn't have the biggest plaque. Then the day state showed up, so.
Sure, buddy.
The district paid for that state plaque. The mayor presents to the outgoing council, but the city manager has the honor of presenting to the mayor, and this truly is an honor. Every group needs a conscience and every group needs a conscience and leadership. Henry Hearn's was our conscience. He never let us forget that we were servants. And he never let us forget that that's why we were there. The reason for public service is service. And it didn't matter position, title, money, red tape, in the end, we made sure it was about the people, the citizens. And there's a lot of people that haven't seen what he has done behind the scenes. He has personally helped me. It would take me an hour to tell you how much he's helped me personally. He's helped most of our employees. He has a relationship with our employees. They know he cares about them. And he knows their names and he greets them and he cares what they do. And, um, on a personal note, there, there's nothing more that we could ask for someone in leadership. So on behalf of staff, I'd really like to thank you, your friendship with me.
I have more bad tears than the staff has. Thank you so much. Mark, I really do appreciate this and, and to say to you, and that'll take hope, hopefully a few moments over, my speech. But I, I really do appreciate you. Thank you so very much. And I feel that when I came on, I came on letting everybody in the world know that I'm a gospel preacher and it didn't matter who liked it or not. If you want me elected, you don't, you don't. And you have done that for eighteen years, kept me on. And so, the Lord Jesus is my Lord and Savior. I will never, ever go back what's on earth. I will, and, and there are a few things that I've done probably the eight, few years, like getting upset. One, a couple of times I got upset on my dad. Well, I don't think the Lord could, uh, could save a man today. I should not have been upset. I should've taken, but sometimes he allowed an enemy to get in front instead of the Lord Jesus getting in front. Let me just read a few things to you and hopefully we can move on with, with what we have to do tonight. I think the first thing I want to do is just to say, I agree with Andy. I hope that the community will give Mayor, uh, Parrish and, and the council an opportunity to serve before you beat them all to pieces. Give them an op-, give them an opportunity to serve. I'm telling you, it, it's something you don't know about back here until you get back here. I made, I came to this town forty-three years ago and I had planned to go to Mississippi when I retired from the, uh, civil service after thirty-something years working for the federal government. And came to the Antelope Valley and found most of what I would have back in Mississippi. And so, I stayed. Raised my children here. My children, all of them went to Antelope Valley High School. And so I, I figured that anybody who moves into a neighborhood or into a community and they call it home, they need to do something about it. So I want my children to know before I forget it. And I really appreciate all of the abuse that you've taken to allow your daddy to go ahead and do the things that he, he needed to do. So it really hurts the children. And when you, when you hop on a council member unjustly, it really hurts their family. I had a little granddaughter one time, just cried her little heart out. Herb Nero had said something about, uh, me, said, called me some fuzzy face or whatever. And my little granddaughter saw that and she just cried her heart out. But thanks be to God, when I went to Herb, he called my little granddaughter and he said, "That was political and I was wrong," and he made her feel really good. And, uh, I'm, I'm, someday we'll see him again, hopefully. The only thing I can say to you tonight as I go on and read some of the things I've done, is that you need to understand that if you can't count to three, I'm talking to the new council here now, I don't care about mayor and nobody else, if you cannot count to three, you can't get there. Gotta be able to count to three. So everything that I'm gonna mention here to you tonight came at the cost of at least two more people who said, "Yes, we'll help you." I'm very proud of the city's conservative financial, uh, management. Uh, Andy had just mentioned that to you. Uh, we can look down the road, I'm saying at least four or five years right now, am I right on that mark? And, and, and we can see that we can maintain our staff and everything else. Even if, if nothing changes, we can still do it. If things go even a little worse, we can still do it. And so I'm very appreciative to our council for that. The road has been clear that improving local transportation has been positive, has a positive effect in the community. Earthquake came nineteen ninety-four, Metro Lake came. Four road and freeway overpasses, Avenue L and H. And by the way, I'm just gonna mention these as we pass through them because I don't have time to go over all of that with you. Improving the streets and accommodating growth, uh, over on my street on Avenue J on the east side, those streets have been widened because they've now got some big houses on the east side of town. So, um, Andy, you, and Ron, you guys who live on the west side, don't think you got all the big houses. We got some big ones on our side. We even got a police force over on our side, you know. Okay. Uh, traffic is now controlled by a computer and we are very thankful for that. New public works maintenance yard that is over here, second to none. And I think if any of you have time to go over there, in fact, Randy took me over one day and we found out that I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at taking my yard and putting false grass on it. Because if you look at that over there, it is really beautiful. You can hardly tell the difference between that and, and natural, uh, uh, grass. Advancing the water system, progress toward water reuse, the dedication and takeover of the sewage system. That brother over there has walked right with us and, and those of you who may feel like I'm a little partial to Randy Williams and, uh, I am a little prejudiced with him because he is a civil engineer. I'm a civil engineer, he's a civil engineer. So, hey. But anyway, I, I really appreciate what he has done and where he's going with, with water. I know that's gonna be a great thing we're gonna, and I'm gonna help with that because I have a passion as well. Education is positively clear. The only way our community will truly excel is by building up our educational resources for our, our citizens. Lancaster cares after school. We got a thousand kids involved in that. Teen Court, Youth and Government, uh, Bridge Program, uh, partnership to establish the Lancaster School District, development of the gymnasiums and things that we use together. Uh, the violent free zone, some of you have read about that. I'm very pleased that I was able to talk to it. I got with Mayor Ledford and school board and, and, uh, I brought it to our council and we had a five oh vote on that. There wasn't even hardly any discussion. Everybody grabbed that right away. CSU, Bakersfield, Lancaster University, teacher training, we're intending to keep all of our teachers here that we can keep here in the area. I have a little granddaughter, I was up with her the other day up in Oakland. She's teaching in the Bronx of Oakland and she's a math teacher. And I sat a whole day with her and I hope I can bring her here to be a math teacher here in our area. She's bad. She's bad, that's all. I mean, she's really good. I thought I was pretty good at math, but she passed me up. Ethics, who's that caused me a problem with, okay? Ethics first class at the Antelope Valley College. This is something where we're getting people to learn how to go to work. Rather than, uh, stay at home if they're a minute or two late, you go home and lay down and go to sleep and all. You need to go to work even if you're late and apologize to the boss and ask him not to fire you. Parks and Recreation and Art, positively clear skies. Years ago, we set a goal, we exceeded that, and two years ago, we reached the point to where we have five hundred and fifty-three acres. Help me on that, uh, line. Five hundred and three, fifty-three acres of parkland. That includes over here at the, uh, where we have the natural, what do we call it?
Prime desert woodland.
High, prime desert woodland. We still have snakes, uh, jackrabbits, cactus, you name it. The natural desert can be seen right there. And I think that's about a hundred and sixty acres, am I correct?
A hundred and two.
A hundred and two, all right? And fifty-eight acres off, all right? Lancaster National Soccer Center in nineteen ninety-six, the best this side of the Mississippi River, Big Eight softball, prime desert woodland, we've already mentioned that, Antelope Valley Fairground. And by the way, we took a little whooping on that and some people went this way and they went the other way. And we said, "Okay, we still need it." And I, I don't know, I think that might've gone down a three-two vote, but we got the fairground and we appreciate that. Lancaster Performing Arts, uh, was, uh, just coming on at the time I was the mayor in nineteen ninety-one. Under construction is the Whit Carter and Gilead Park. So we're, we're still moving forward with parks. Sierra Highway Bike Trail, Jet Hawk Stadium. How many of you been to Jet Hawk, Jet Hawk Stadium? We had a big fight on that one and it went down three-two vote. And somebody said it was gonna sink in the ground, but it's not in the ground yet. It's still perking and, and jet-hawking. Okay? Make it, uh, we clearly got a lot to celebrate. Aerospace Walk of Honor, we've been able to have the astronauts. Uh, the first moonwalkers and everybody else has been right here in the City of Lancaster. We appreciate that. Parks and Recreation. Looking good, Lancaster. Bark at the Park. Poppy Festival. I mean, if you got a chance to go to the Poppy Festival this, recently. Me and, I know my mayor, Mayor Ledford and all of you all was there, so we appreciate that. And by the way, you give us credit for this, I gotta hand it back because it's the staff who really did it, not us. So give that staff a hand. Celebrating downtown, we've had, I think, four or five of those over the last few years. And ladies and gentlemen, that has been a wonderful time, uh, that we've had people to come, uh, here, thousands. I think there've been as high as probably five thousand people sitting out there in the street waiting for the music to start. And we had an opportunity, and while they were sitting waiting for the music, I did the eating part. So I, I, I enjoy that. I don't pull no bones about it. I love eating good food. Housing area, it is possibly clear that there is no better place in the world, including Palmdale. Now see, if, if the mayor hadn't been here, I would really talk about it, but, but this is a wonderful place to call home and we appreciate that. And housing, the housing was awarded eight million dollars for the construction and rehabilitation of the following projects. Jackman and Ellen, Jackman and Beach, mental health housing, senior housing development, Cedar Town Square... Cedar Town Square, a royal, a village, there's, oh, I could go on and name. The mini housing, and this, by the way, did not require us to do a eminent domain. People shared with us and sold the property to us so that we could build houses. Long-term projects that will make a tremendous impact on the fabric of this community, including the North Town Transit Village, Operation High Desert, Low Tree Neighborhood Project, which was approved in two thousand and three. Still the most affordable place to buy a home in California. Proactive code enforcement, and our code enforcement, can I use my Mississippi language? They ain't joking. They really mean business. They don't mean to hurt anybody, but they really wanna make sure that things go well here in the community. Business growth. We can't get it any clearer than this. Since I've been on the council, somewhere between twelve and fifteen thousand jobs, now, we're just talking about Lancaster, and I'm sure that Palmdale has either that or more. But twelve to fifteen thousand jobs been developed here in our city. So, I am appreciative and glad to have been a part of that. The following firms that have been brought to our community, such as Countrywide, Walmart and Walmart on the east, Walmart west, and they have expanded both of them. Michael Distribution Center, that's over in the Foxfield area. And by the way, what we did in the Foxfield area, we went ahead and conditioned the Foxfield area so that we could do eminent domain if we needed to. And I don't know if we needed to do that for the Michael Center or not, but we got the Michael Distribution Center, Starwood, Costco. We had to cut a few trees on that one. And a few people cut us down his trees too. But that's okay, we knew that we needed to do that and so, we went ahead and did that and we're very happy about that. Harley-Davidson, Rexall Industry, Rite Aid, Lance Campus, Deluxe Finance Services, and many more. And here's what I wanna share with you and it will close that session. Over on K eight to L, on the east side of Tenth Street West, a hundred, approximately a hundred and forty or fifty acres. Ladies and gentlemen, hold on, because this council, this mayor, and these people are gonna bring that, and the staff are gonna bring that into existence. And I've already renamed it, the Twenty-First Century Mall. That's what it is. So, look out for that. And over there on Tenth Street West, that's where it is. Sale tax is done very well. We are now over twenty million dollars annually in sale tax and we're happy about that. Retail and Commercial Center at Tenth Street West, where the old Sears building used to be, those of you who've been around here a while, you may remember the old Sears building. Well, that has all been cleaned up and they got some good eating over there and some other things too. Notice I mention the eating always first. Hotels, four of them. Development of the Lancaster Business Park and Foxfield Industry Corridor, using eminent domain if we need to. Listen, here's one thing that I'm very proud of. In nineteen, I think it was nineteen, two thousand and six, along with Palmdale and I think Santa Clarita, we were selected in five, we were in the top five running for the most business friendly city in LA County. And I feel very honored that we were among a good group like the city of Palmdale. And by the way, the city of Palmdale ain't no joke when it comes to good eating places and so forth. And I know where they all are. But here's what I am really proud of. Last year, November sixth, we were given the Achievement Award, which is the Eddie Award for the most business-friendly city in all of Los Angeles County. Public safety is another area that we really have gone all out in. Nineteen ninety-one, we went to the, by the way, nineteen ninety-one, I served as the mayor. And Jim Gillie was then our city manager. And we got in the wind of there's a possibility that we could get some money, pass-through dollars down at the county board of supervisors. And my city, my fifth district supervisor, Supervisor Michael Antonovich, let us know that. So, Jim Gillie and I went down there, long story made short, I was able to drum up enough votes. Kenny Hahn gave me my third vote. And we walked away with forty-four million dollars of pass-through dollars to come back and do fire stations and all the other things that we've done here, the police station and all that, came out of that forty-four million dollars. I'm very proud that I was able to make that pitch and come back with forty-four million dollars. Okay, our budget for our shaft station was like twenty-five million. Library, three new fire stations, all that came out of those dollars. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna cut this a little bit shorter. I just needed eighteen minutes, one minute per year. In the past year, we've done, we've had a great increase in our community. Our shaft station, by the way, please understand this, out of all of America, all of the states in America, our shaft station got the number three in customer services in all of America. That's how our shaft station rate. We're in a hot zone out here, but we keep our station satisfied, staffed with skilled firemen who protects our families and our homes. Let's take a quick look at city development and I'll cut across the line on that. Make it positively clear that the city of Lancaster cannot keep the streets swept, and I know Mayor Ledford can tell you that, if we don't have the tax dollars to do it with. We have received eighteen Helen Putnam Awards of Excellence. Top honors for the state of California by the League of California Cities. CSUB Satellites, Lancaster University Center, revitalization of the Downtown Core, Downtown Transit Village Plan, which was passed in two thousand and one, Children's Center of the Antelope Valley, which is right down in the corner, second to none, is a very beautiful place. And I have the opportunity to serve on that board. Mental Health Association, Shaft Station, Library, Fire Station, LPAC, City Hall, new downtown signage, landscaping, removal of overhead power lines. It's just a lot that is going on in our city that our city staff, with our support, has made happen here in our community. Nineteen ninety-three, we created what was known as a partners group. And there may be some of you who got to be a part of that. And that was a wonderful time, you looked at things for us, came back with priority ones, which was public safety, and we jumped right on that. We are the eighth largest city in LA County, fastest-growing in LA County, and the tenth fastest-growing city in America. I had to have a drink of water. I'd like to close by giving you some personal notes on what I feel really proud of. Some personal accomplishment. I was the very first chairman of the Antelope Valley Transit Authority. I was the first chairman for the Desert Mountain League of Cities, which is now flourishing and doing very well. I was the very first chairman for that group. First chairman for the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District. I established through the leadership with the allowance of our council, the, established the mayor's roundtable breakfast. I held the first joint Lancaster-Palmdale City Council meeting, Steve, when your daddy was sitting as the mayor. I was able to talk to Mayor Pete Knight and say, "We ought to come together and talk about our commonality." And we had a first one, and then thanks to Mayor Ledford, we had one last year, which was both councils coming together to talk about our common things. And as Jim says quite often, we have more in common than we have differences, and I agree with that. Established the mayor's business roundtable. Passed the strongest ordinance of anywhere against pornography. And it was passed by this council and the community came together, the ministers and pastors and all, and made that happen. Launched the city's Gwen Luther King Day celebration. I was fortunate to be out at Edwards when all this came about and we established it out at Edwards and we came and had a few meetings out on the lawn. And then later on, I came to the then-sitting mayor, who was Mayor Lynn Harrison, I don't know if she's here tonight. Lynn, are you here?
She's here.
Yes, she was sitting as the mayor at the time. And I asked her if we could have the meeting out in the yard and she gave us that permission. And we had the very first one out there and also helped to get the official date established. I established the mayor's prayer breakfast that you hopefully will go to on May first. And I feel very proud of that and the business men and women in this community took care of that and made that to continue to go. Led the plan for the Violent Free Zone, I've already told you about that. And I guess what I'd like to close with is this. I hope again that you will give this new council an opportunity to do some things without getting stomped into the ground. That's a real request from my heart to you. I'm not, I'm just saying, not saying go home, lay down, go to sleep, I'm not saying it at all. But I am saying, talk to them with respect and give them that courtesy to know that you care about them even though you disagree with what they have done or what they are about to do. But let them have an opportunity with your love. I truly thank you, the community, who allowed me to serve eighteen consecutive years. I really want you to know that I feel very thankful, I appreciate you allowing me to do that. Staff, thank you for making it all happen so that I did look good. Please know that I also want to be positively clear that Henry Hearns, Bishop Hearns, ex-mayor Hearns is not going anywhere. I will be right here to help my council or my mayor and whoever else needs help to make sure our city gets going and that we get that Twenty-First Century Mall built. If I've done anything worth mentioning, if I've done anything that is good, I pray that you will help me to give the praise to God. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. I am going to request in a few moments, we gotta go back to normal business, but I'm gonna say that I would like to request, then we'll be our mayor and the council, ask you to adjourn the meeting tonight in honor and in memory of Sylvia McEwen, who is our city manager's wife, who passed away and they had those services, I believe, on yesterday? On yesterday?
City Attorney.
City Attorney, what did I say? Oh, I'm lost here, you are. City Attorney, appreciate that. But I would hope that you all would adjourn in her memory and we appreciate that. Now, am I back on normal agenda? Public business from the floor on agenda's item.
No, sir.
Presentation to the city, which we want to do a canvas and Gary's on you now. This is a canvas of the voting that took place and it's our responsibility to approve or disapprove of the recommendation. Now, our city clerk, you're on.
Thank you. Mayor Hearns and council members, in front of you in your agenda packets, you will find the election presentation on golden rod paper. As you know, we held our election on April eighth, two thousand and eight, in the south lobby of City Hall. And all required notices for the election were given in the time foreigner manner as prescribed by the law. The election was held, votes were cast, received, and canvassed. On April tenth, our department, the city clerk department, canvassed the election results, and by that I mean that we drew two precincts at random. And we tallied each vote by hand, this was an all-day process. And we made sure those votes equaled the votes that came from the OptaMark reader that you witnessed seeing being used on election night. And I'm proud to say the votes came up accurate.
All right.
On April eleventh, we completed the final count of the provisional ballots and vote-by-mail ballots that were dropped off at all the precincts. Each provisional and vote-by-mail ballot was inspected for proper signature, making sure they were registered voters and that their addresses were accurate. This process was open to the public and took place in our department as well. Approximately seventy ballots were rejected and the reasons ranged from citizens were not registered to vote, or they did not live in the city limits, they did not sign their vote-by-mail ballot envelope, and last but not least, several citizens attempted to vote twice. Fortunately, we have an excellent computer program that picks up on that and so, nobody got to vote twice. Our recommendation to you this evening is for you to adopt Resolution oh eight thirty-three and oh eight thirty-four, which recite the facts of the election and declare the results of the election of the mayor and two council members, and it also declares the results of the advisory measures that were on the ballot. The discussion as to whether the city should consolidate the election with the county will be presented to the city council at a later date. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Gentlemen, you have any questions? No question. I'm open for a motion for Resolution oh eight dash three-three.
Move adoption of Resolution number zero eight dash three-three. Second.
Please cast your ballot. It is passed unanimously and Jeffery is not here, obviously. Our next is a resolution, number oh eight three-four.
Move adoption of Resolution number zero eight dash three-four. Second.
Please cast your ballot, please. All right. It is unanimous and is so ordered. Okay, appreciate that. And we'll go on to the agency action.
No.
No. I'm through?
No, we have two agencies.
Yes, we.
From March twenty-fifth, the minutes.
All right, you wanna stand on your head there on that one?
You got me for once. It took you the last meeting, but you got me.
All right. The consent calendar, which is the redevelopment agency consent calendar, may be acted upon with one motion or a second.
Move to a dub. Second.
All right, that's RCC one. Okay. Unanimous and so ordered. And the consent calendar for the city council.
Move to a dub.
CC one and two. Second, I'll take second on that one. Okay, if you would, gentlemen, please cast your. Okay, if you would, gentlemen, please cast your vote. Again, unanimous and is so ordered, and I believe at this time, we are ready to, what we're going to have to do, ladies and gentlemen, so that they can put up the new council member's name, and set the board, and set everything here, we're going to take, how much time we need, about 10 or 15 minutes?
10, 15.
We'll need, say, 15 minutes? You need 15? And I hope that you will remain for the rest of the council meeting if you can, but if you cannot, we certainly appreciate you having been here with us tonight, and this has been a wonderful meeting for us, and Mayor, we appreciate you so much, you and Steve, Norm, thank you so very much, and Danita, thank you, all of you who made statements tonight, thank all of you so very much for everything you've done, and this kind of ends, I will be calling the meeting back to order when we come back, and then that will conclude everything that I have to offer, and then I'll be looking in the face of my new mayor and council. Okay, so at this time, we're going to take a 15-minute recess, so we'll be back at 10 minutes, 10 minutes after 8. We appreciate that, thank you so very much, and, oh, there are 10 or 12 seats over here in the middle that a lady can take, a man can stand, and stuff. Still some more seats down here by Mayor Roberts, they saved me one because I'm going to be in it right there by Mayor Roberts in a minute. Save a seat for me. Okay, if everybody's here, we'd like to, I don't have my deal here, but, thank you, sir. That is it. There you go. I get to get one last lick in here.
I'm only up here.
What I'd like to do is to call the meeting back to order to, and at this time, what I'd like to do is to have our city clerk administer the oath of office to our new city council member and mayor.
If I could have Mayor Lynn Harrison first, please?
Slow. I, Rex Paris.
You solemnly swear-
Solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States- And the Constitution of the State of California-
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
I will bear true faith and allegiance-
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States-
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely-
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
I will well and faithfully discharge-
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah, yeah! Yeah, yeah! You can be free now, thank you.
Thank you.
And vice and vice, Councilmember like Marcus?
Where'd he go?
Wait, wait, doesn't he come to his seat now?
Doesn't he get a bigger chair?
Mr. Mayor? We need you, Mr. Mayor!
I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion. I will well and faithfully discharge-
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Okay, and this is for you.
I think so. Do I do the roll call? Who does the roll call? Jury does? Okay, good.
Councilmember Marcus?
Here.
Councilmember Cilio?
Here.
Vice, um, excuse me, Mayor Paris?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Before we do anything, I would like Bishop Hearns to come up and lead us in prayer. I think that's the way this council will start.
Right here, up here? Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand with us? There was a king who had situations that were facing him, and he called on a prophet, not that I'm all that, to ask God to intervene, and I come tonight in that order, to ask God to bless you and to keep you, and not only that, Sherry, Ed, Ron, and also Ken when he's back. So with that thought, let's pray. God, we come to you tonight, and we thank you for the privilege to be able to come to you tonight. Some history is set in order. Change is inevitable, but we thank you, Lord, and believe tonight that every move and every change that is made will be bringing glory and honor to you. Lord, you sent me to this city 43 years ago, and you allowed me to bless and raise my children here, even went through some changes in my home, but you kept me anyway, and I know that you put me on the council in 1990, and you asked me and gave me strict orders to obey your will, and you'd keep me there until you were done, and I know you don't love me any more than you love Rex and the rest of these council members. So I come to you tonight, tonight, Lord, without a question in my mind, I know you're going to keep this city, the city of Lancaster, and you told Abraham one time, and I haven't forgotten that, and I share this in my prayer tonight with these, you said that you would curse those who cursed Abraham, and you would bless those who blessed Abraham, and so, Lord, I call upon you tonight to bless this council with wisdom, knowledge, understanding, fortitude, and a great love for this community, and for each citizen here that they will respect highly and love them. God, we thank you now, and we ask your blessings upon this place, in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. God bless you.
We have any agendaized items to be removed, Mr. Bozigian?
No, sir, we do not, and then you should go to the council reorganization for the appointment of vice mayor.
I'll nominate Ron Smith for vice mayor.
Pursuant to the Lancaster Municipal Code, Section 2.04.020, the vice mayor is selected by the process set forth there, and it's my understanding, Mr. Smith is the individual qualified as the vice mayor. So the nomination is not necessary, but you can confirm by vote that Mr. Smith meets the requirements of 2.04.020.
So he's the vice mayor?
Shall we vote on it?
It's not a nomination process, he meets the qualifications that are set forth in the code.
So do we vote on it or not?
Yes.
We do vote on it?
You can.
Do I need a second to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I second that.
All in favor?
Oh, that's right, fancy buttons. That stick.
If you go too far, press it again. Yeah, that's pretty good.
I need one more vote. Oh, no, excuse me.
We are in the missing man formation tonight. So the vote was unanimous with Mr. Mann being absent.
Congratulations.
Before we go on, I have a poster in my old office before somebody blew it up, that it has a ship in the storm, and underneath it, it says, "Stay the course," and whenever I've seen Ron in the last few months, that's what I vision, is that ship in that picture, and he stayed the course in the roughest seas, and I'm proud to have you as my vice mayor. You know, they print all this out for you, but I got to find out where I'm at. Oh, do we, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, is that where we're at?
Yes.
Okay. Move adoption, CC 1 through CC 19.
Second.
Go ahead and vote. The vote is unanimous with Councilman Mann absent. Actually, I think for the record to be correct, he hasn't been sworn in yet, so he is not absent.
That's correct.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, new business, Mr. Bozigian?
Mayor Paris and city council members, before you tonight is a listing, and it's in the agenda package as well, for the folks in the audience, of the organizations and joint powers, authorities, and legislative bodies that the city council is members of. We've organized it in two, and in priority order, there's eight organizations that require council representation, and those are listed, and if I may, I'm going to read them for the benefit of those that don't have it in front of them, the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, the Antelope Valley Transit Authority, and the Sanitation District. Then we have the North County Transportation Coalition, the High Desert Corridor JPA, Southern California Association of Governments Regional Council, and we actually belong to two League of Cities, one is the Los Angeles Division, the other is the Desert Mountain Division. There are also several organizations and community organizations that the council supports that are supported through representation with staff. At this time, it would be appropriate to appoint members of the council to the eight organizations I mentioned. We also have additional information, if necessary, on when these organizations meet the next meeting, and we can answer any questions you might have on the organizations themselves.
Thank you. In light of Councilman Mann's absence, I would prefer that we put off all but the first three. I understand we have to do the first three today, but the remaining five, I'd prefer to put them off until he gets back in case he has some input or discussion regarding them. As to the first three, I understand that they're, it's for me to appoint the council to approve, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. As to the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, I would appoint Councilwoman Marquez and Councilman Smith. The Antelope Valley Transit Authority, Councilwoman Marquez and Councilman Smith. The Sanitation District, Mr. Mann has indicated to me that he does want to be on that, and so I will appoint myself and Mr. Cilio and Mr. Mann as alternates, and I understand that as mayor, I have to be the appointee, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so that's how we'll do that. And I would entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
I'll move to approve those appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and vote. The vote is unanimous. The council agenda is next, beginning with CA 1. I guess we're going to have to break that into two parts, is that correct?
No, what I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, if I could, is that I was put down as the presenter of this, there was some opposition because of maybe a possible technicality, so I'm going to defer to the mayor on these three council agenda items for presentation.
In regards to that, let's not keep anything secret from the folks as to how that works. Until I was sworn in, I was not authorized to put anything on the agenda, one of the councilmen objected, and that's why Mr. Smith put it on in my place, but I would defer to the city attorney as to item one. As to how we appoint the planning commission?
It's my understanding that you, Mr. Mayor, would like to have staff look into the methodology and prepare and submit for consideration the appropriate documentation to revise the methodology for appointment of planning commissioners, and with the council's concurrence, we will do so.
Okay. Just so the folks are clear, pursuant to the statute, the mayor makes all these appointments except those appointments specifically enumerated by statute. In the past, what has occurred is each council member has appointed an individual to the planning commission in the council then approved it. Once the mayor became elected with Mayor Roberts, that was no longer a valid procedure. That became crystal clear after the last planning commission had been appointed, with an attorney general opinion pointing out that the planning commission must be appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. With that being the case, it would appear that the appointment of the previous planning commission had some error or irregularity to it, however, we would not have known that because the attorney general opinion had not yet been issued, is that correct?
It is correct that the attorney general opinion had not yet issued, the council did approve the prior, the existing planning commission with the new attorney general opinion from 2006. Any future appointments of planning commissioners should certainly comply with those provisions, which would be for the mayor to, mayor to appoint and approval by the council members.
Yes, and in addition, I would recommend that the appointment be for a period of two years as opposed to four years, so that the next- four years, so that the next Mayor will be able to appoint the Planning Commission. In order to make everything right, and you're going to have to help me break this down in motions, and so that everybody can have their say, I am going to propose that we either ask Commissioner Fo to step down and Commissioner McPherson to step down, and that's the last two remaining people on the Planning Commission. And then I hope to get applications from the community at large, and we will reappoint the Planning Commission at our earliest possible time. And what I mean by applications, I don't mean sending them to me. I mean sending them to the city clerk, and she has a one-page form, and depending on how many people apply will determine what kind of procedure is followed in that appointment process. So how should we do this?
Well, with that being the case, then I'll make a motion, at least on CA1, the Planning Commissioners on McPherson and Fo would be CA2. On CA1, I'll make a motion that we continue the appointments per municipal code for tonight for 30 days and direct staff to come back, not only with a cleared-up ordinance of two years, and also open it up, give staff direction to post an application on the Internet so that the public can apply and submit it to the clerk. What's the date? What's the Tuesday before the meeting in 30 days?
May 6 would be the Tuesday before, I believe.
Right, and with the Mayor's approval that we cut off at that date any receiving of applications to give the Mayor time to look at those applications. So that would be my somewhat complex motion, but I think we'll get it forward.
I'll second that. I have a question for clarification of our city attorney. Given that the Attorney General's opinion came out after the current planning commissioners were appointed, do we have any legal problems with any decisions they've made or the seats they currently hold? Are they, they are in fact legitimately appointed, and we have no problem with the decisions they've made, number one. And number two, would we have an issue if any of the, the two planning commissioners who have time left on their current term, if that were to stay, if we were to leave them in their, to finish up the two years of their four-year slots, do we have any legal problems with that?
The government code requires them to have been selected by the city council. They were approved by the city council. They were nominated in the first instance by council members, but they were indeed approved by the city council in accordance with the government code. There's no problem with the decisions they've made, and they can remain in their seats.
Thank you.
Okay, question for council, if I could, please. On the motion that's on the floor and seconded right now, if we do pass that motion and CA2 comes up and there is a removal or stepping down of the two commissioners, those positions would also be included in this motion of application for the 30 days, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we had a second on this. Mr. Mayor, we have eight speakers' cards on CA1.
Hi, my name is Greg Morgan, a former president of the Democratic Club of the Antelope Valley, and I rise in support of the Mayor's initiative on CA1 for the reorganization of the Planning Commission, and I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good start for the new Mayor and the new council.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, congratulations. I see you got the buttons worked out. Sounds great.
I'm getting there.
Good. I've come before this council many times. I've always been about the process and procedure, and I really appreciate the fact that you want to have transparency in government, and that's a process you want to do. I think it's great, and I just, I'm looking forward to this process being that way, and the public getting more involved, and so I do come out in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shanborn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do support your motion, and I think that it's a great opportunity for people who normally would not have the opportunity to apply for the Planning Commission, who may be very well-qualified, to be considered by the council. They don't have to be brought in by a single council members. You can open it up to the whole community, and I think that's a very great idea and very inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Beard Williams. Now watch her be against it.
I totally oppose it. No. Good evening. The reason why I'm speaking is because during the campaign, I was fortunate enough to call a number of families in the community and talk to them about what they wanted to see government be about. And a lot of them talked about inclusion. And I think that, you know, giving kudos to Mayor Ledford in terms of the way Palmdale does it, how it's open to the public, they submit applications, people feel that they can be included. I think that that's a great step for this council, and that's based on the conversations that I've had with many residents during the campaign. So I hope that this does pass. Thank you.
Mr. Gainer, Gene Gainer. It's nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, Mr. Mayor, and city council group and staff. I wholeheartedly support this. I'm sorry that I have to be the one that follows all these other people or saying all my words. Seems like I wrote their scripts. But I wholeheartedly support the program because I believe it's about time that everybody who wanted to be a member of this Planning Commission submitted an application and had the opportunity to be scrutinized and determined by the city council as to their value and position on what they were going to do. So I wholeheartedly support this, and I congratulate you on taking this position.
Thank you, Mr. Gainer.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and staff.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Moffett. I'm your local tax attorney. And in looking at this issue, I actually researched it, saw that Tampa Bay, New Orleans, and San Francisco face this same issue. And what do you know, they gave the Mayor the discretion and also the discretion that to come run their CA2 to terminate. So I agree with your position here. And I think that a Mayor is like a conductor, and I look forward to you being the conductor of the new city and being able to act with immediacy in addressing some of the problems that we're currently facing. And I think having a new Planning Commission would be essential to doing that. And again, I support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Buten. Did I pronounce that right? Buten, I'm sorry. I knew I had it wrong. I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's very common. As a fairly new resident of Lancaster, I've been a resident of the Antelope Valley for about 14, 15 years now. A resident of Lancaster for just a couple of months.
Let me interrupt you. You're president of the Blue Star Moms, aren't you?
Not president. I am on the board of the Blue Star Moms. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for doing that.
Acknowledging. But I would like to say that I wholeheartedly support this, and I'm glad to see Lancaster is getting a fresh start. I hope a lot of positive changes will take place, and this is a great start for Lancaster. And it's, I think it's a good idea to include the public and to have it open to the public and to have a leader who will lead us as a community and include everybody.
Thank you.
So I support the motion.
Thank you. Mr. McPherson, it'd be Commissioner McPherson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bruce McPherson. I'm a current Lancaster Planning Commissioner, but I'm speaking tonight as a resident, citizen of Lancaster. First thing I want to do is congratulate you, Mayor Paris, on your election. Councilmember Marquez, I'd like to congratulate you as well on your election, and also Ken Mann, I'd like to congratulate him, but he's not here. What I'd like to say is that I appreciate and understand your approach. I appreciate that you have done the research into this, and there's no arguing state law. And however this comes down, I want you to know that my position on the Planning Commission is at service at the will of the council, and whatever the council's decision is, I'm willing to abide by it faithfully.
Thank you. And Mr. McPherson, we would invite you to apply. This is not meant to...
I intend to apply.
Good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Honorable council members, distinguished guests in the audience. My name is Darren Parker. I'm president of the Antelope Valley Human Relations Task Force. I believe that I would like to categorize the move that you're making tonight as, in the beginning, as a city, we make baby steps, as Scripture says. But we've seen that over the last 20 years that I've been a resident here, that we've grown up, and it is now time for us to take those adult steps. I think this is a move in the positive direction. I think that our leadership before, with all the resources that they had at hand, made the best decisions for this community, and that's why we're here today. There is no slight on any of the decisions they made or any of the people they appointed. All of them led with their hearts, and we can see the results as we stand here today. But I think, as I said earlier, as Scripture tells us, as babies, we walked as babies. Now as grownups, we shall walk as grownups. I support the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. I hope I'm not the lone voice in the wilderness saying something different from everyone else who agrees with this.
You're not. You're just the only one standing there.
But I wanted to just point out that while it's true we must follow state law, and we do need to adjust the process, and I agree with that, the reason I wanted to speak is to let you know that I think the Planning Commission has done a really good job. It was a little over a year ago that I first showed up here, my concern being over on the west side, Quartz Hill, the high school, the plan to put supercenters directly across from it. And I came in very naive, very innocent, inexperienced, and I've learned a lot over this last year. And I have attended Planning Commission meetings. I've attended meetings here, and sometimes midnight oil does burn, and by the time citizens participate, we use our three minutes, you know. It ends up being a lengthy process. The Planning Commission has done a real good job, and I hope in your efforts to progress that you don't in any way punish or slight the good, well-serving members who have done a fabulous job. Almost every time there's an adjustment like this, there's some kind of grandfather clause to recognize the people who are in place, who have either bought property or are serving in a position. And I would hope in your discussions tonight that you recognize that kind of grandfathering clause and give the honorable, well-serving members who still have time on their terms an opportunity to fulfill that obligation they made. But I thank you for addressing the fact we do need to go forward, and I think it's a good idea to map out from here on how we're going to progress. And I just hope that you have consideration for the existing members who have, like I said, done a real good job, and you consider in terms of a grandfather clause that honors the commitment they've made. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's it for the speaker cards on CA1.
Before we continue, there was a letter from Councilman Mann that I need to read, or I don't know that I need to, but I'm going to. Dated April 18, 2008, to my fellow council members, city council meeting April 22, 2008, from the desk of Ken Mann. This is to be read aloud to the public and entered into the public record. With this appointment, my work required me to be present at the first meeting of the newly-elected Lancaster City Council. As a personal request, I would ask that the council agenda items CA1 and CA2 be continued to the next council agenda. My thinking is that I wish to discuss this matter publicly and give my thoughts on the matter. I believe that my 16 years on the Planning Commission uniquely qualify me to speak to this issue. A position or thoughts on this matter does not allow me to respond to any discussion from any fellow council members. I further believe that potentially overturning 30 years of council precedent is not a matter to be taken lightly. Once again, I appreciate your forbearance in this matter. I would also ask that council agenda item CA3 be continued to the next council meeting as well. Once again, I think that to potentially overturn 30 years of precedent is a matter that should be discussed by the full council. I do not perceive that any of the items mentioned above are emergency items or require immediate decisions, so I would respectfully request that all of them be continued to the next meeting. Thank you for your understanding and willingness to accommodate me in this matter. Ken Mann, copy Mark Bozegian and Jerry Bryan. In the future, I would suggest that you use bigger fonts when you send me something to read. Any...
There's a motion on the floor with a second. It's open for discussion for the council.
My Vice Mayor tells me that there's a motion on the floor with a second, and...
And it's open for discussion?
And it's open for discussion by the council. I have some comments that are probably best left for CA2 on the matter of changing to two-year terms since state law now says it's by the appointment of the Mayor with ratification by the council. It makes perfect sense for the three seats of the newly-elected members. I would disagree on the removal of the current planning commissioners, and I'll elaborate more on that when we get to CA2. I'm not quite sure how to proceed because I believe the motion is for all five. Is that correct?
No, the present motion is for the process for the selection of planning commissioners in the future. Presently, you have two seated. Whether they will remain seated after CA2 is an open question still.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? The vote is unanimous. So now we would go to CA2. Is there a motion? I guess I will make the motion to remove Commissioner Fo and to remove Commissioner McPherson and thank them for their service. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
And then it's for discussion. We have no cards on CA2, so it would be discussion from the council.
Well, I guess this is the first time we're going to amicably disagree, as we've all said that we're prone to do from time to time. I appeal to my fellow commissioners as all of us who have formerly sat on the Planning Commission. Councilmember Marcus has sat, I believe, on the Citizens Advisory Committee, so has quite a bit of experience in the planning process. We all know that when you start as a planning commissioner, just as you start as a city councilman, you really don't know anything, and it takes time to get up to speed. And that training experience that you gain is important, and it's important to the direction that our city, to the plan we're laying out for where we want to get to. Sitting before the Planning Commission right now is our general plan update, which is the blueprint, the constitution, if you will, of land use and how this city will grow. There are other large projects, such as the redevelopment specific plan for downtown. I don't believe it's prudent to remove all of our experienced commissioners at one time. If we were to leave the two experienced commissioners on the Planning Commission, they're still not a majority, but I believe they can provide guidance to the new planning commissioners, and I think overall, our city would benefit from leaving, again, our experienced commissioners where they sit right now in their current seats. And they have two years left as, left on their terms, as new planning commissioners would have two years to serve. Thank you. Anyone else?
No comments, Mayor.
I support it.
I agree with everything you said. It's, it's, there's nothing to argue with in regards to that. There's nothing to argue with in regards to that. And I think that when I look at the applications, I hope that many of the past members of the Planning Commission will apply. But it is a decision that the mayor makes, and then the council will either accept or reject my appointments. While we're on the subject, I'd like to serve notice on the city now that there's going to be a lot more commissions than the Planning Commission. The time for the government doing everything for the citizens has come to an end in the city of Lancaster. We're going to do it together.[634.16][634.16](APPLAUSE). And so I would like everybody to grab an application who wants to really be involved in this city. A few years ago, my wife read a book called Good to Great, and she made me read it, like she makes me read lots of things. And she made it abundantly clear that if we were to remove the toxicity from the office and concentrate on people who wanted to improve the office and wanted to excel, that we could accomplish something wonderful. And three years later, the office has tripled in size. I don't see any reason why that's not going to happen with this city. The people who want to get involved are going to have the opportunity to do so. So get the application. It's going to take you 10 minutes to fill it out, and then we'll figure out where everybody wants to be, and then let's do something wonderful in the next two years. I hope you do it with me. Any other discussion?
No other discussion.
Then let's vote. The vote is...how do I do this? Do I call them out individually?
No, you can simply say it's a 3-1 vote with Councilmember Cilio voting no.
Let's assume I said that.
I just did.[726.81][726.81](LAUGHING).
Thank you. Now we're at CA3, which is...oh, that's the good part. In the last two weeks, I am simply astonished by the number of requests you guys get, meaning Mayor Roberts and Mayor Hearns. It is truly overwhelming. And, you know, some cities have mayors that being mayor is their job. Our form of government is we have a working mayor. But at the same time, I think that there's a need to fulfill all of those needs and all of those requests, even when some of them occur on the same day. We have a policy in place where if I'm unavailable, then it would go to the vice mayor, and then it would go to the council members to attend. But even then, we have an enormous number of people wanting city involvement, aren't getting it. And in addition to that, I have worked with both Mayor Roberts and Mayor Hearns, and they know so much more about being a mayor than I do. And so I came up with an idea that I thought I'd throw out and we can discuss. I would like the two elected mayors to serve in the capacity as honorary mayor emeritus for the city of Lancaster. And I would make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
We don't have any speaker's cards on that one.
Hey, this was a great time to speak.[827.01][827.01](LAUGHING).
Well, I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor, is that I think Mr. Roberts and Mr. Hearns, like I said before, I don't know how anybody can fill one of their shoes, much less all of them. And they have been just wonderful representatives of our city, and I'd like to continue them. I know about a month or so ago, we voted that Mayor Hearns would now be our senior citizen ombudsman or representative to the senior citizen community, so they can have a better connectivity. And I think this is just a really good, really good position, that if we can't go there for a lot of the ceremonial duties and a lot of the dinners and things that we have to go to, that we can be well represented.
For clarification, I know it's policy that normally it's the mayor goes, and then the vice mayor, and then if not available, council members. Is that by policy, or is that actually an ordinance? Do we have to...
The municipal code calls out the duties of the council members and the mayor and vice mayor, and enumerates who attends in order upon availability. So yes, that is set out in the code.
So how would this work? Would that pecking order, for lack of a better term, still be in existence? And then if no council members are available, it would go to the mayor emerita? Can I make a word?
Or both.
Yes.
I don't see any...this is not in any way an effort to change that.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to be seeing a lot of changes. This is not one of them.
It's my understanding that the position proposed would be an honorary position with no authority behind it, otherwise we would have to amend the code in order to allow the position.
You guys can live with that, can't you?
Yes.
Okay. And it would be for a period of two years. One question for Frank and Henry is, didn't you get enough?[955.23][955.23](LAUGHING).
May I respond to that?
Of course, of course.
The answer is absolutely yes. But I really made a wholehearted commitment to my sitting mayor that I would support him in every way, starting with prayer and anything that has needed to be done, that I can do up to a point, I'd be most happy to do that. To say, "Do you have enough?", if I did not have enough, I would have run again. Because the sitting mayor and a lot of other people said, "We'd support you." But I said, "My children said no," and they've gone along with this for 18 years, and I'm done from that point. But I'd be most happy to do anything I can do for my community. I love my community.
I would have to say that this city is a great city, and I want it to remain a great city. And I know that the kind of services that are required by those people that want us visiting them and dining with them, so-called supping with them, we should provide some sort of service to do that. I'm dedicated to do that as well. So I would agree with Henry, and whatever you decide, I'll live with.
Now, I want all you folks out there that didn't vote for me and wished I wasn't here to understand that it was Frank Roberts that got me involved in politics.[1051.58][1051.58](LAUGHING). So now's your shot. Okay, we ready to vote? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Before I go on as the new mayor, you know, we hear a lot of stories about power brokers, and you know, and I know everybody's getting a little antsy, why am I bringing that up now? Because I have some power brokers, and I thought I would introduce them to you so there wouldn't be any mistake. Would John Sisson stand up, please? Jason Schuler and Noah Lomax, please stand up. These are my power brokers. They're all students at West Coast Baptist. They worked tirelessly, every single day, and there is no doubt in my mind that I would not have been elected without them. And they are the only power brokers I have, but they definitely are power brokers.
City manager, any announcements?
Yes, I have three quick announcements, if I may. First, I'd like to thank the staff that helped put this day on today. It was very difficult, two council meetings, and that's Terry Crosby and Jerry Bryant and Aldridge and others helped Josh in Parks and Rec, so they did a good job. I'd like to acknowledge that. I'd also like to acknowledge, I thank Allison Burns and Joe Adams for pinch-hitting for us as Dave's dealing with the family situation. And then last, I'd like to briefly ask Lyle Norton to talk about the Poppy Festival this weekend. It always makes me very proud to be associated with this city when I go to the Poppy Festival, and our staff just continues to amaze me what a good job they do putting this on as ancillary duty. We don't have anyone who's the Poppy Festival manager, so they do it as part of their duty. So I'd like Lyle to give you a brief rundown of that event.
Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, last weekend, we had the 17th Annual Poppy Festival. I concur with Mark, and I do this in most humbleness because my direct involvement and hard work in the Poppy Festival was to observe my staff do a great job, and with the assistance of other departments of the city. I did want to report to you that we had an excess of 41,000 people in actual turnstile attendance. We overcame the weather. We prayed for good weather, and we got good weather on the weekend, except in the middle of the night, Saturday night, the Sausage World booth started here and it ended up over there.[1227.86][1227.86](LAUGHING). But this staff did a great job, and the community has continued to support this. Is Lori Butts still here? She was here earlier. Where is Lori?[1238.33][1238.33](APPLAUSE). Lori Butts is a special events manager, and although it was a collective effort of the entire department, she's the one that lives and breathes it and makes sure that everybody's on course, and she did a great job. Would you stand up for just a second, Lori?
That's it? City clerk?
This is the portion of the agenda that allows an individual to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda. You may fill out a speaker card, which you'll find at the back of the council chambers. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on any items that are not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. And as I mentioned earlier, when you approach the podium, you'll notice three lights. The yellow light will come on when you have 30 seconds left of your time to speak, and you will hear a chime. When your time is up, you'll hear a chime and a beep. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers their three minutes as well. And if needed, council will address your concerns under council comments when all speakers have finished their three minutes. And with that, it's for you to call them up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good evening. Usually I press my timer button, but I see we've improved, and thank you so much for that. Congratulations to all of you. Ms. Marquez, congratulations. It's great to see a lady on the council. And speaking of ladies and power brokers, Mr. Paris, my wife is very glad that you were elected.[1365.03][1365.03](LAUGHING). I personally, if it wasn't me, am glad it's you. So congratulations, sir. There's wonderful things ahead for our city, and I would like to participate and be part of them. Tonight, I just want to be brief and close by mentioning my friend John Ballmer, who passed away last Monday. He was a gentleman who came to many council meetings, and he came right up until the last weeks of his life. So that's the kind of dedication that I see in many of our citizens, and I'm glad you're encouraging that from all of us. So thank you again. Congratulations, and God bless you all.
Is it Cleo Goss? Is that how you pronounce it?
Yes. Okay. I'll say congratulations for winning.
Thank you.
I like your idea of the walk with the mayor.
Thank you.
Except I think that you should not limit it to Lancaster City Park. You should go to the neighborhoods of the concerned citizens. And I would like to offer myself as one of your very first walk with the mayors. I would like to hold it on the corner of 60th Street West and Avenue L, right by Quartz Hill High School. I would love for you to see the amount of traffic this location gets between 7:00 and 7:30 every school day. And on top of that, there are this proposal to develop commercial sites across the street from Quartz Hill High School. Currently, the northwest corner is a vacant lot, and the southwest corner is a ranch. Neither property generates crime. But I can't think of a faster way to introduce crime to a neighborhood than to put in a commercial site. Because criminals follow the money, and if you have no money there, they won't be there. And over and over again, you read or see or hear from somebody or see on the TV that when there's robberies and muggings and stuff, these criminals escape into the neighborhood. And the neighborhood right there is Quartz Hill High School and Joe Walker Jr. High School. This is not a good idea. It is not promoting safety. So to change the zone to this location from residential to commercial will devastate the community. It will bring crime in. And a perfect example of that is the commercial site on J., East J and 20th Street, 20th Street East and Avenue J. That site, in 2006, the city had to pay for two sheriffs to be there 24/7 and amounted police on the weekends. City didn't want to pay for that anymore, so they talked to the stores, Walmart and Stater Brothers, and they made an agreement with LA County Sheriff to pay for a sheriff to be there during the store time. That agreement expired December 31st, 2007, and a month and a half later, a coworker of mine was robbed, mugged with a knife in the Walmart parking lot. So a vote for a zone change to commercial is going to result in crime in this neighborhood and devastate the community. And anytime you want, I would love to walk with you, but we have to do it before school is out. And don't pick the month of June because half the students don't show. So I have my card in, I have my phone number, call me. I have great ideas for those locations. We don't need another discount center.
Thank you. But do you really want them here to walk in traffic?[1614.51][1614.51](LAUGHING).
Yes. Yeah. That's the only way you're going to see how bad this area is.
Thank you. You're not going to push me out in the traffic, are you?
I didn't hear you.
You're not going to push me out in the traffic, are you?
No, I'll be right there with you if you need to get in traffic, okay?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gary Burgess. Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Smith, council members Cilio and Councilmember Marquez. I'd like to commend you, the new members, for stepping forward and accepting this challenge to make Lancaster a safer city and one in which our overall quality of life will be improved. I mean, it's a big job you've got ahead of you, and I feel that you're up to it, and you have my support, whatever it takes. I would like to take this public opportunity to thank Henry Hearns, Andy Fisaki, and Jim Jeffre for their support in the past in relation to the improvement of our community. They've been there, each one of them. When I've called, they've called me back on various things. Maybe it's the squeaky wheel theory, whatever it is, but they certainly showed they cared. And also, Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Cilio have done the same thing. They've recognized what the problems are. They probably recognized them before I pointed out some of them, but at least they worked, I felt like, with me. So I really appreciate that. And I feel Mayor Paris and Councilmember Marquez, that you, as well as newly-elected Councilmember Ken Mann, have a great city staff to support you. They all know me personally, and I can't say enough about them, and I support the fact that if you consider Mark Bozegian as more than an interim city manager, I would look forward to him being in that position. I'm still living in the city here. I'd like to say to the community at large, one person can make a difference in this city. I've seen a difference that I...maybe I'm patting myself on the back. Other people have helped me, but I feel that I've made a little bit of a difference. So one person can make a difference. So I just say, step forward, be involved, and be that person. And because mainly, the council can't do it by themselves. You need the input from the citizens, and you need to listen to the citizens, maybe not always do what we want, but still, if you listen, then you'll sort it out, and it'll be a better place for us all to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Heather Brown. Heather Brown.
Hello. Congratulations. I'm here to discuss something that happened on August 8 of 2007. My vehicle, which was on private property, was taken by the city. It was told to me when I exited my house, they didn't knock on my door, that my vehicle was parked on someone else's property, a doctor who I had agreement with to watch his property and store my vehicles on. There was an officer, the officer Cooper, and he was the only one that listened to me and was helpful. And I had spoken the day before, August 7, to Sergeant Bluff at the Police Department. He told me that the 45-foot refrigerator trailer that had been abandoned there that was currently mine had to be moved by the 12th of August. This was the 8th. I'd talked to him the day before at 4:30, and he said, "You don't have to move it until the 12th." So, I had it sold, it was going to be moved, but my vehicle was five inches on the doctor's property that was going to be fenced off. They told me I had to move my things off of his property, no problem. I'd attempted to move the trailer, so Officer Cooper was there. He was the only one that listened, and it was helpful, but the city basically stole my '92 Ford Probenwell. That doesn't seem like much. It was five inches on the doctor's property, and they took my property, and I want it back. So, whatever you can do to get it back. I was hit by an SUV, never sent a lien notice, but the day, I guess that it was auctioned, I called a couple of days later, and they told me it was auctioned off. My car was auctioned off on October 2. Sadly, I was hit by an SUV in a crosswalk. I don't have very good luck, but I want my car back. So, it was already auctioned off. I guess Clark &amp; Howard auctioned it off, never sent me a notice or the proper authorization or notice to the person that owns the vehicle. I never got anything like that in the mail. So, I would like to know, basically, what I can do, or what the city's going to do to return my vehicle to me.
Mr. Bezegan, can you have somebody look into that? But I would like the answer to it with the documentation, if I could, okay?
Thank you.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, Diana Beard-Williams.
Mayor Paris. Mayor Paris. It sounds good.
Yeah, it takes a little time to get used to.
I know. Congratulations to all of you who hold office. Something that I wanted to say to really bring to closure this election for myself. As many of you know, I did work for Mayor Paris. And there were just a couple of issues that I felt needed to be said in terms of his character, and also in terms of things that have been said for my own sense of self-value. I listened last evening to people talk about the amount of money that was spent, and I need people to understand that money was spent because that was our way of getting our message out. It wasn't our way of doing anything that was underhanded, or anything that was not acceptable. It was our way of getting our message out because of media issues. The other thing I want to say is that when people say that Mr. Paris is not approachable or accessible, I need you to know that there is not that kind of man behind that facade. Mr. Paris and I had not been friends for 10 years. Is that right, Mayor Paris?
Not friends is an interesting way to put it.
Yes. Adversaries, I'll say, for about 10 years. And it was on my heart, I had gone to a religious retreat, it was on my heart, that I really wanted to speak to him, and I also wanted to make peace within myself and with the community, because there are a lot of things that have happened in my life that I get tired of trying to explain. And his brother brought us together, and we had a conversation, and really was a conversation that changed my life in many ways. Mayor Paris told me, "You can be toxic, you can be angry, you can hold on to the past, or you can let go, and you can move forward. You can use your pen to write acerbic things, or vitriolic things, or you can use your pen to uplift, to strengthen, to empower." That is how Mayor Paris and I got together in terms of this campaign. And I thank him dearly, because even when the piece came out in the Antelope Valley Press, they really crushed me, something that was repeated from 10 years ago. I said to him, "If you want to let me go, let me go if it will help your campaign." And what he said to me is that, "I'm not that kind of man. I believe in your heart, and I believe in your soul, and together, we will work this through." So, I want to say to everyone here, whatever differences they may have on this council, this is a man who will do everything he can to work things through for the betterment of this community. And I thank you, Rex Paris, for working and standing by me and showing me a new way of seeing things as well. I truly believe in you as a man and a human being.
Thank you. That's it for the non-adjourned items. Mr. Mayor? So, what do I do now?
Can I ask the city manager if we have any closed-session items? I don't think we do.
Before I do that, I want to tell you what's coming. Some great stuff is coming. On Law Day, there'll be an announcement about a new law enforcement initiative and a new task force that'll be coming into the entire Antelope Valley, not just Lancaster, but also Palmdale, which was a direct result of Antelope Valley War on Gangs, that is going to have a huge impact on further pushing these gangs back. And so, everybody should be at Law Day. You're going to find that our community is going to get a lot better very quickly. I've already told you about the different commissions that we're looking at. One of them is a Criminal Justice Commission that will be every bit as formalized as the Planning Commission will be. It was suggested by Sheriff Baca last night at the LPAC meeting, and so it's something you want to pay attention to and look into. We put a two-week deadline on getting that thing up and rolling, and why I do those things, I'll never know. Probably should have given it more time, but what I would like to see tonight, I would ask Vice Mayor Smith to assist me on working with the Sheriff's Department and the city staff in formalizing just how we're going to do that. And that's certainly something that Councilwoman Marquez is going to be... Do I call you Councilwoman, or Council... What's the protocol?
It's up to Ms. Marquez.
What should I call you?
Councilwoman.
Okay. Councilwoman Marquez will be heavily involved in that, in light of your efforts on any war on gangs. So, progress is coming, and we also want to figure out a way to discuss with you your ideas on how to further... This should be an exciting two years. Another thing we're looking at is changing the meeting times so that people have longer to speak. One of the things we'll change today is if it's an appeal, there will be no three-minute rule, and if there's a report that we've requested you to make, there will be no three-minute rule on that. The three-minute rule as to the rest of it is really an issue of how long we have to have these meetings, and if we change the time, and I think we can do a lot better. But that's something we will want to discuss with you folks that come to the meetings. And so, it's not something set in stone, but, Mr. Burgess, that's certainly something that I would like you to be involved in, so we can figure out a way that people have a greater say in what's going on in the city. Thank you. Councilwoman. Councilwoman.
I did have one.
Yes, ma'am.
After having sat out there where you are sitting tonight, several times I had come into the council chambers and often wondered why there wasn't something on this back wall. And at one time, I thought, you know, it'd be really great if we could put something on that wall, and something that would inspire, something patriotic. And I really would like discussion on if we put our national motto, "In God We Trust", on that back wall. In raised lettering, I don't know, we need to... I'm not a real great decorator, so something, gold raised letters or silver letters.
Something magnificent.
But I think that would be very inspiring and patriotic, and I think it would be a great idea. I'd like to do that.
So, how do I do that? Or how does...
It's a non-adjourned item, so you give direction to staff to investigate.
Oh, would you do that?
Yes, we will, and we'll report. And yes, we will, and we will report back to council.
Great. I think that's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
I agree.
Councilwoman, having a last name that's not hard to butcher, I'll give you an opportunity to properly pronounce your last name before it becomes engraved in the public consciousness in the wrong fashion.
It's Marcus. My husband is Cuban background, and it's pronounced Marcus. I had one of my aunts get in my face, so to speak, after we were married, and she repeated it like 10 times and made me repeat it 10 times. So, it's Marcus. Something that we... I'd never even thought of this before, and during the campaign, my husband would once in a while go on the blogs and see what was out there, and something came up very interesting that helped people remember how to pronounce the last name, is that it rhymes with carcass. I like Marcus Welby M.D. better, but a lot of people don't remember Marcus Welby M.D. But it is Marcus, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure. Mine's Smith. He didn't rhyme it with a lot of stuff on the blogs, but he had other words. Mayor Hearn's, did you have something?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you all for allowing me to speak just a moment, and next time I'll fill out a card. What I'd like to say, first of all, is I am so pleased with how you all conducted the meeting tonight. I am so pleased, and I want you to know that I really appreciate it, and I am excited about what is going to happen to us. I'm very excited about that. And the other thing I want to make mention of tonight is Sylvia McEwen. I just wanted to say a word or two about her. First of all, all of these 18 years that I've been on the council, and Vice Mayor, and Mayor in '91 and '92, and Mayor again here two years ago, that she is just absolutely a beautiful woman. She was a good wife to her husband, and many a times had an opportunity to eat good food that she had made sure that we got. And I really want to request the prayers of everybody for David McEwen, because he is... That's a heavy thing for him, because he and his wife was extremely close. And so, tonight, that's why I've asked you to honor her tonight and in memory of her tonight as you close the meeting. So, she was an absolute wonderful woman, and I feel myself very honored to have an opportunity to have known her these past 18 years. God bless you, and again, thank you for how you've done it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other council comments, then you adjourn the meeting.
Adjourned. So, this concludes the meeting for this evening. As requested earlier, this meeting is adjourned in memory of Sylvia McEwen, wife of our city attorney, David McEwen, and our prayers are with David. Our next regular meeting will take place at 6:00 PM on May 13, 2008. Thank you all for coming. I look forward to working with you.